All right, thank you very much. Thanks for joining us today. This is the Aspen City Council Work Session for March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Tonight's agenda, residential and growth management policy discussion, and if there is time allowed, council board reports and council updates. I did want to take this opportunity to say one thing, that previously on this work session agenda was a destination marketing presentation by the chamber, and for those of you that are viewing or tuning in with us, that has been delayed, and we will be getting to that discussion in a few weeks. We had to push that due to some other agenda changes that we needed to make. So for those of you tuning in for that, we apologize, but it will be back in a couple of weeks. With that, we'll get right on to our work session topic of residential and growth management policy discussion. We've got Ben and Philip with us today. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, for the record, Ben Anderson, planner with Community Development. Sitting next to me is Philip Sapina, Community Development Director. Just a couple of notes before we begin. The memo for this evening's work session was originally written to be presented to you in a discussion last evening. The memo makes reference to ordinance twenty-seven, and I just wanted to say that the action of council the last couple of days, certainly the same material applies to ordinance six, and I just wanted to make note of the relationship of the memo to council's actions over the last couple of days. Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, I'd like to share my slides.
We would love that.
Okay. Okay. This afternoon, we'd like to have a fairly targeted conversation with council about a few topics that were clearly outlined in the memo that was presented to you, dealing with residential development, and as kind of a policy choice that we have there, and then a few policy choices that we have around affordable housing, again, in response to the moratorium that we currently have in place. And that's kind of the nature of our conversation this evening, although I do want to provide some updates on public engagement efforts last week, and also just kind of let you know where we're going next and what our plan is moving forward. So that's what we're talking about this afternoon, but we'd be happy to go where you folks would like to go with this conversation. But we do have some things that we're looking specifically from you this evening.
What's happening there?
Okay, just a little bit of an update of what transpired last week. I think you would be hard pressed to have been in Aspen last week and not know that the city was engaged in discussions around the moratorium, particularly the residential development aspect of the moratorium. We held pop-up events on the pedestrian mall, talked to a lot of folks, kind of in an informal setting. We had events directed at different parts of town. We had focus groups that were geared to different groups, different interest levels, different topics that folks were interested in. Philip and I and our consultant team have continued to have one-on-one conversations. Those things will continue. We've got several scheduled over the next few days, as we continue to, I think, try to gauge the conversation to the different folks that we're talking about. Certainly, the conversations that we had at the pedestrian mall to kind of a more general audience were very different than some of the conversations that we had in focus groups with some folks that are a little bit more expert in the land use code. And then we're also continuing to build out the resources on Aspen Community Voice. I do want to just say a couple of things. You know, we heard have had some comments directed at us, and I think some comments have been directed at you, just about the nature of the engagement, the kind of where the conversation was directed. We've heard some comments that it was, you know, too high level, that we weren't getting into specific policy direction. And I will say that we had different conversations last week. We had some conversations that were very high level, that were very much trying to confirm some of the ideas that were in the emergency ordinance discussion, get folks sense on that. But we also had very targeted conversations about very specific topics. And I will just say that, you know, the, you know, some of the statements that were made in the memo and some of the statements that we'll make this evening were very much shaped by the conversations that we had last week. And I will also just say that we, you know, plan to have a similarly scaled but perhaps different, you know, a conversation with the community of a different nature, and early to mid-April, as we have specific policy direction that we're going to be asking for feedback before we come to you with any specific code amendments. So I just wanted to let you know, you know, and I think in our opinion, last week was a success. We had some really great conversations, heard some really profound statements from folks, you know, ran into folks who, you know, I think were coming to the topic for the very first time out on the pedestrian mall and had good conversations with them, and also had good conversations with people who, you know, are folks that we deal with in community development on a daily basis, who, you know, know the land use code and these issues very well. So it was a successful conversation last week, and I think we intend to, you know, get more specific with the community and present some more specific ideas, once we've landed on those and are ready to present those for more specific discussion in April. A few of these introductory slides, you saw a couple of weeks ago with Philip's presentation on STR, just to kind of give a little bit of additional context. To the moratorium work, you've seen this slide a few times. Our timeline hasn't really shifted at all in response to, you know, the events of the last couple of weeks. We still plan on having things in front of you for consideration in early May. These constraints, the presentation this evening, some of the framing that was present in the memo, these constraints are still there. Certainly, we're all very glad that that some of the restrictions on COVID have eased. We can have one-on-one conversations with the community. Certainly, that was a real strength of last week, being in the same room with folks and being able to have kind of more intimate conversations out in the community. I will say that, you know, as we've had conversations with people, these problems haven't become any less complex. And certainly, I think counsel understands that there are varying views on these topics within the community, and we're still trying to navigate the challenges of that. And importantly, you know, a lot of our decision-making on this continues to be the deadline of the moratorium in June. We've shown this to you, this slide, a couple of times now. We want to be, as we're working towards a response to the moratorium issues, we want to focus on the things that we think will have the most direct effect. We want to do a few things well, as opposed to trying to cover all the things that we could possibly be covering. We want to make sure that the things that we're going to be bringing to you between now and June are necessary under the protection of the moratorium. And we understand that these are expensive topics. There's going to be many topics probably that need to wait. And, you know, we're trying to set realistic expectations for ourselves and for the community and for council as we weigh through these topics. So tonight, again, this is a fairly constrained conversation, in terms of the presentation, both in the memo and the discussion, hopefully. We are really wanting to present to you some of the trade-offs and opportunities of some of the policy choices that we need some direction on. And then with that, we'd like some clear direction on these questions that we're asking of you in the memo. I apologize for bringing this slide back. I'm still a little offended by the color of the orange, but I left it just because. The first topic we want to talk about tonight is the pace and scale of residential development. I think in this area, where many of the things that council expressed concerns, that we've been talking to you about for some time, that I think culminated in the declaration of the emergency ordinance, very quickly, we see a lot of what's happening in the current development context as being inconsistent with our climate goals. We know very clearly that GMQS is not capturing or mitigating for the current trends in our residential development arena. There's a feeling that mass and scale, as we're seeing it, and the architecture and the size of homes that are being built, that they're out of, they're inconsistent with the AACP. We've heard from neighbors, you've heard from neighbors, that construction impacts are a concern, and certainly, we want to make sure that as this, the nature of residential development continues, that we're addressing impacts to our infrastructure. So here's the question. This was asked pretty clearly to you in the memo. And I think as we've understood these topics, we've looked in the land use code for potential solutions and responses, and we've had interviews with the development community, we had lots of conversations with folks last week. This is a really important question for us to answer because it really does send us down different paths in terms of our response to these issues. And I think we all agree on the issues, but how we respond to those, there's options in front of us. So the first question is, should we further limit the floor area, either net or gross, and we can talk about net and gross a little bit more if we need to, of new or redeveloped free market, single-family or duplex development? This is really the, you know, that area of our residential context is what we've been talking about throughout this topic. And the question is, do we make those homes smaller and more consistent with some of the things that we're trying to achieve within the residential sector by limiting the floor area of these structures? Or should we pursue updated mitigation requirements and alternatives that do not reduce floor area? The memo went into some discussion why this is such a big question. And I will just say that I think in interviews with the development community, comments that we heard last week, the first question on this list is, I think, as we went down this path on the emergency moratorium, the thing that's probably causing our development community the most anxiety about what our response to this is going to be. And I don't think that there's any way of getting around the fact that real estate is what it is in this community per square foot, and even minimal reductions to that square footage, whether it be gross or net. We could talk about the different, we're going to talk about the different tactics that we could take in doing that. They all have the same effect of reducing the value of a particular property, either now or in a redevelopment scenario. And I think the potential of significant changes in this area is one of the things that's causing a lot of the discomfort with some of the things that we're talking about. So I think that that's one of the reasons why, one, I think we need to get this, an answer to this question and move forward, because it is, I think, one of the things that's weighing on our process, weighing on the community as they're thinking about this process. And I think it's a question that we need to get some, get some direction on and start moving on in terms of policy responses. So a little bit more about reducing floor area. And I think all of these things have been talked about in conversations with, that we've had with council and some of the things that you've, you know, suggested, perhaps we've suggested. You can do this in a variety of different ways in the land use code. The first is limiting the net allowable floor area established for each zone district. So we go into the dimensional allowances in each zone district and start trying to rethink what we offer to a particular property in the zone districts. Or we could go into the floor exemptions that are in the measurements and calculations section. This is, this is a section where it gives staff and the development community the rules by which we calculate that floor area in which a lot of things are based, mitigation, you know, the allowable size of a particular home. The most significant of those, and we've talked with these, with you about these before, is the subgrade exemption for basements and the garage exemption. And then lastly, and you know, this is, I think, the direction that Picken County was going in some of their growth management responses in the last couple of years, is creating a new maximum allowable gross floor area based on lot size. So rather than using Aspen's pretty complicated net floor area calculation, where we exempt all kinds of things, we create a gross floor area with a ceiling to that, that we apply in different zone districts, that would include our sort of net that we currently calculate, and then give some exemption within that total gross for, for subgrade, et cetera, et cetera. That's kind of the mechanism through which the county measures that. So if there is a desire from council to sort of go down this path of limiting floor area, there are three sort of tactics that we could take within the land use code that could get at the, the effect of limiting the floor area for a particular, for a particular home or a particular lot. There's some pros and cons to this. Pro is, it's a pretty straightforward approach. I think the thing that we have in our land use code that is most directly associated with the size of homes is floor area. And reducing that number could have both visual and environmental impacts. That may be what council is seeking. On the con side of the equation, we see this topic as extremely contentious due to the value of square footage. Even minimal reductions in square footage is going to have an effect on people's valuation of their property. We also think that unless council were desiring to pursue a very substantial reduction in this floor area, that it would not likely translate into the outcomes council is desiring. It takes a lot to, of square footage on a five or six thousand or seven thousand square foot house, to look at that house and see the reduction of five hundred feet. And so in terms of the mass and scale and how it's perceived from the street, we think that that impact would be fairly minimal. And I think likewise, on some of the other sort of climate issues that we're interested in and some of the other things that we're looking at within the residential sector, again, unless you were to really make a substantial reduction in floor area, we don't think that that would translate into really significant differences in the outcomes that we're looking for. The other limits, one of the other limitations of this path is that because of that reduction in value, we would have it, have to have a very defensible position on the numbers that we were landing on in terms of that reduction. Certainly possible, we've downzoned in this community before, other communities downzone and kind of reduce floor area, but in order to do so and give justification to that, you've got to engage in a very rigorous exercise to land on the right number. It's going to take some time, and to be frank, I don't know that we have the time in the next couple of months to pull off something like that. We could, we could look at it, we could think about it, but I do just want to say that that's a, that's a fairly big lift in terms of going through our zone districts and coming up with a fair and defensible number around this topic. And then lastly, other alternatives could provide more impactful outcomes that will likely be less contentious. And this is kind of our second proposal of the mitigation of other alternatives. We do think that if there were not other responses that we could engage in, that this would be a very reasonable path to try to get at some of the things that council has expressed interest in. But because there's other alternatives that are present, we do think that those are worth exploring, particularly because of the contentious nature of this particular topic.
Just give you guys a question for it?
Yeah, just a question. So if we were going to go down the path of reducing floor area by any of the three tools, do those rules have to be applied blanket across a zone district? And the reason I'm asking is just, you know, I think, at least I get the most heartburn when we see, say, you know, a fifteen hundred or two thousand square foot historic structure, that at the end of the day, you know, not just like the quaint nature of it and the historical nature of it, but also the affordability. I mean, even a thousand square feet is three million dollars at this rate, low end. But when that becomes, you know, six thousand square feet, including subterranean, hurts a lot more than a nineteen nineties house that was five thousand square feet becoming six thousand square feet.
Broadly, yes, we have to apply the same rules equally.
Your phone, please.
There are opportunities to layer on top of the sort of baseline floor area number that a community establishes, that a community establishes for residential development. I think our historic preservation program is the most localized example of ways to do that. You give floor area bonuses for going through different review processes and meeting certain standards. But by and large, yes, the same rules for every property within a zone district, and that baseline number needs to be the same.
Got it. And could you do something that, so I'm just trying to think of like how you might achieve less of that dramatic growth for the remaining smaller properties, but apply it evenly? Could you do something like, say, you know, X is the gross limit, or, you know, thirty percent greater than the existing structure on the parcel today, whichever is smaller, for instance?
You know, I don't know the specific response to that. The general legal response is any level of complication is any level of complication or gradation, if you will, to the regulations is an opening for a legal challenge. And we are, as Ben described, concerned about legal challenge in this, in this space. On, on this particular topic. And so, and then there's the administrative side of things where we, we have a current land use code that is extremely complicated and favor sort of simple enforceable, defensible responses and regulations to things as opposed to trying to layer on more complication. And so, while I understand the sort of, the sort of policy intent that you're, that you're driving at, we'd have significant concerns on a number of levels.
Got it. Thanks.
John, and then Ward.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I don't have that part of my packet right in front of me, but the line in the packet that said reducing the footprint could lead to more properties being rehabilitated so they wouldn't lose their current FAR, I found that possibility kind of attractive. On the other hand, I understand the contentiousness of this issue as it actually would affect my daughter's future. So, anyway, I, I agree. I think the other alternatives will probably be where my heart lies.
Thanks. Ward?
Yeah, I wonder if in your outreach, there's been any discussion about upzoning for 100% affordable upsizing?
Yeah, that'll be a slide that we talk about a little bit later in the discussion. But certainly, I think that there were a series of questions in the public outreach that were asking about the encouragement of affordable housing through either location or sort of additional dimensional flexibility. So, certainly, we'll, we'll have a more specific conversation on that a few slides down.
And if my mind serves me, ordinance 24 was on floor area ratio and mitigation for housing and subgrade and garage. That, that applies to new construction as well as remodels and reconstruction?
That's correct. But just to be clear, I think that we had the expectation that that mitigation would apply kind of different from what it is now to sort of a, closer to a gross floor area calculation that included subgrade spaces and also dealt with kind of the existing square footage of a home during a redevelopment scenario. This would be distinct and really talking about the physical dimensions of a building, of a, of a home as opposed to the mitigation requirements. And so, I think that in staff's thinking, those are, would continue to be two distinct calculations that we're doing. One for the allowable floor area in terms of its dimensional requirements and then a second calculation for employee generation impacts.
Just from a very high level, I think we, we all have a feel for exactly what, what the impacts are and what we want to mitigate for. And from a high level, I think that our building code for new, new construction is pretty environmentally friendly or it's pretty advanced. And I, I think what we're aiming for is mitigate for employee generation and creation of workforce housing. So, just from a very high level, I want to look at what, what we want to, what our end is and then how do we get there. And I'm just not sure that limiting the floor area is going to be the, the path forward. And so, I'm, look forward to the non-floor area ratio approach.
Yeah, thank you. You know, I've had a little history with this kind of thing from a long time ago. And when I was mayor, we did reduce floor area ratio on what I would say primarily were odd sized and outsized lots and things that were annexed into the city separate from the traditional grid. And the goal was to be able to create a bit of a transferable development right program and have an ability for some historic properties and others to transfer some of their density somewhere else without losing the value. That was very quickly reversed by the next council. And I, I think that that's worth bearing in mind is that, you know, whatever we're trying to do is about something that will last and something that guides and shapes it going forward. You know, in that kind of after time, and I had gotten back on council, they were still doing community meetings about seven different locations across town. And somebody would host in their house and have a little wine and cheese and people could just talk about whatever was on their mind with the managers and the council members, perhaps from closest to that area. And I would ask the question and again and again about taming the monster home or house sizes. And from a lot of long-term locals who had not redeveloped their homes, they'd say, you know, are you trying to make us the ones who saved the town now after all this other stuff has happened? And isn't it a little late on the barn door for us? And so, I take that experience very, very seriously. And reading through your memo over the weekend, I really do believe you've made the right choice in recommending to us the mitigate fully path. And that's what I would want to support going forward. I think it's a lot easier for people to understand the relationship of the mitigation. And, you know, I, I am tempted on looking at reducing or eliminating some of the exemptions, but not to the extent that, you know, again, it becomes like a big downsizing and downzoning. But it, the, what struck me is maybe a path on that would be the demolition ordinance that council enacted, I think, on commercial properties. But, you know, every five year, every, every 5% a year, it changes. And so, I, I don't know if that would make some sense for a way to go about reducing perhaps subgrade space or, or some of those others. I just throw it out there for your consideration, you know, because you did have, should any be reduced or eliminated? And maybe it's not something that could be sudden, but that could be eased in over time. Again, particularly on the subgrade space, which seems so much to drive so much of this. But that's pretty much where I'm, I'm out. I am on this. And, you know, the other thing that I think has gotten really complicated, and I'm sure you guys know this, is the uses of the FAR are, you know, it's different if that FAR is going to be a residential home versus that FAR is going to be a six-bedroom short-term rental. You know, this is where there's a little bit of a nexus between those two that I'm, I'm less clear on. If it's in neighborhoods that in the future are, there are no STRs here, you know, you, you know what the use of that home is going to be. When it is going to be a home in an area where STRs are allowed, how do we really calculate that mitigation? And it's gotten weird, as I said, because you have the mitigation for the uses and employees' demand created in-house or on property. But that's very different from the demand created in retail and in the commercial core and for other services. And I, I just think we really need to be able to start having that differentiation between residential and STR uses after the homes are built or as they're being designed. Thank you.
No, actually, I was going to ask Ward a question, but kind of hearing everyone else, I don't think I need to ask it. I'll probably explain my thinking a little bit, but I'd love to hear your thoughts, Thor.
On this topic, I am a little bit of all. You know, when I think about the sheer mass of some of the houses that I've seen, and I have a couple of examples that I'll take pictures of and then maybe confer with you about how it fits into this question that you're asking. Because there are some examples that I know that have struck me in particular, I'll just talk about West End, where the, the feel and the character of the neighborhood has just changed. And, and for me, that, that is something that is directly related to the massing. And I'm thinking of particularly a couple of places that I know where the, the homes are built to, and this is what I don't know, built to the setback? Are they encroaching into the setbacks? I, I don't know. So, for me to fully answer this, I'd have to really kind of go over some of the things that I've observed and kind of get your feedback about what it is that's, that's less acceptable for me. That being said, I don't know that that approach is to say, oh, this many square foot as a reduction, or whether, as, as it's said in here about dimensionals and, and requirements. So, for example, subgrade space basement development, I've been concerned about the volume of the lot that is being taken up by that, by what is allowed, which right now I, there are some regulations to it, but it's, it's, it's as much developable as I think is possible right now. And so, those are the kind of questions for me. It could be dimensional changes that get at the root of the issue, not just simple square footage number. I am very open to the conversation that you guys are introducing here. I agree with all of, all of your input. I am, again, just to be clear, I, when it says extremely contentious and the value of square footage, my goal here is not about limiting value. It's not about just smaller house sizes because they just seem so big or what have you. It's really getting at the impacts, as you noted here in the memo. So, I'm open to the conversation. I do feel like maybe it's a multi-pronged approach for me. But, but how to get to the end goal is really what I'm, I'm learning from you guys.
We can come back to council with some cause and effect, sort of visual representations of what it looks like to change the way that we calculate something like building height, right? Where you're not touching residential square footage allowances per se, but we calculate, is it five or six different methodologies for calculating building height depending upon the shape of the building? The pitch of the roof, whether it's flat, whether it's a butterfly roof, whether it's got a 1212 or a, or a 412, right? And so, some slight modifications to that, in staff's estimation, are really effective tools at addressing the concept of massing as experience from the sort of pedestrian way, from the pedestrian experience. And we're prepared to come back with some analysis to help you understand that cause and effect a little bit better.
Thanks. Did you have a follow-up on this item?
Is it okay if I just follow up?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think you may have been hitting on it, Philip, but I, I really wanted to go back. I remember when Roger Hunt was on Planning and Zoning Commission, and he would always talk about volume metric, that there's some, it's not all floor area, it's about the volume that people are creating. Is there a way to get to, to the empty space, basically, creating a lot of volume for volume's sake and dramatic space? But anyhow, there's that. And I just wanted to mention, you know, it was a while ago, we were doing board interviews on the Board of Adjustments. And we were told a story about how they helped people avoid the residential design standards by saying, yes, you can have the windows that you want on the front that design standards won't. And I just wanted to say, I didn't think that was what Board of Adjustment was about, was getting out of design review standards. So, I wanted to pass that along. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate all that. Reading the packet, I definitely thought I was coming in to support staff decision. I still think that's where I am. I just kind of want to think out loud a little bit so you guys can kind of check my homework. You know, when I was initially thinking about the, the downzoning of the free market residential, it was never in the pursuit of that as the end. Certainly, you know, smaller home sizes have a visual impact. That's a net positive in my mind. That's the one clear thing. The environmental impacts, I think, can be dealt with in other areas of the code around, you know, how we recycle or deconstruct materiality, all that sort of stuff. So, I think that's, that's sort of moot. The piece that I'm really looking at when we're looking at allowances is trying to get to the place where the incentives, the math equation are as such, that private developers start building what we actually need, which is affordable housing. There's a number of variables in that equation. One of them is, we'll talk about later, upzoning 100% affordable. One of them is process, right? So, we talk about buy right later, very supportive. So, people get their return faster. They're not sitting on that, that capital. And then the, the third potential is the downzoning of free market residential. And again, that's in service of the balance. My feeling, and this is why I'm saying, please check my homework, is this is, a reduction here is very unlikely to affect the demand for this product. Almost certainly unlikely to affect the demand. And so, when the demand is the same and the resource becomes more scarce or more limited, the price just goes up. So, I actually think if we did this, it would be existing homeowners who are over that square footage would actually have a big windfall because they would have something that no one else can get. So, I, I just say that out loud to say, when thinking about it within the context of that equation to deliver what we want, even if we were to do it, I imagine that any benefit would be very short-lived until the price adjusts. And I wondered if, if everyone kind of feels the same way.
I think certainly we understand that dynamic, Skipper, and I, and I think that it's a, it's a fair point. And I will just say that one of the things that we heard pretty clearly from multiple people that we talked about is that they want to try to be incentivized to do things that we want. And I think there's a perception of when we, when we, the disincentivizing thing is a kind of a stick rather than a carrot is, is the thing where, at least was expressed to us, that there's this threshold at which that becomes maybe less tolerable than some of the things that we've done previously in this community. And so, I think certainly there's a, there's an argument to be made that if, if there is a, an effort to sort of downzone or reduce square footage, that it, it does kind of have the effect of trying to create more balance with this type of development rather than the affordable that we're, we're seeking. However, I just think that the, and I use this, this bad cliche in the memo that I think is really applicable here, is that it just takes the, the oxygen out of the room and that all other conversations, I mean, we really do feel strongly that if we go down this path, that it takes away some of the opportunities that we have to work productively with the development, design, planning community to identify the appropriate balances of incentives and disincentives moving forward. It's just, it's, and, you know, I think this word gets used a lot in our, in our society right now, but I, I think it really does sort of intensify the toxicity on, on some of these conversations. And I think that that's really central to, you know, where we landed on our, our recommendation. It's not that it wouldn't have some effect. It certainly would on, on a lot of the things that I think council has identified. It's just whether or not there's a, a feeling that, that downside to that conversation is, is worth the things that couldn't be, you know, approached with other things.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. And, you know, hearing you say, we're not going to solve this math equation alone. And so, if everyone leaves the room, it's sort of irrelevant what it does. So, I, I, I hear that. The follow-up, which I think is true, is just, you know, if we decide to leave this variable at X, you know, the equation's still solvable in your guys' minds.
If I'm following your analogy, yes. And one of the folks that we were talking with during our outreach efforts over the last month or so made, I think, a really interesting point for us that informed our thinking on this topic, which is, you know, Aspen is a luxury real estate market. Let's own that, right? And let's be honest about what we are selling here and, and what the Community Development Department and other city development review agencies are managing here. And to the extent that some of our current housing stock, existing housing stock, houses locals, you know, it, it's our view that we're at a point where, where that's sort of a nice benefit, but, but not what this product, what this real estate market is really focused on doing anymore. And so, if, if, if we can reduce that sort of idea out of our thinking and accept where we are from a market standpoint and a community standpoint, the idea of being able to realize more community benefits for those things that we can still manage, those things we can still deliver to the community in the form of a clean environment, you know, deed restricted affordable housing and a, a, a significant portion of our community that is a lived-in community, that, that, that that's actually in the aggregate a better approach. And that was the basis of staff's recommendation.
Yeah, yeah, cool. Yeah, I, I appreciate that and agree with, with where staff's going.
Any more on that first? No, I, I kind of, the way that I had this slide set up, and I think of several of these topics we've already talked about. Certainly, we've talked about affordable housing mitigation kind of as in that sort of alternative package to, to limiting floor area. I just wanted to say that we're clearly down the path in response to the comments that we heard when ordinance 24, which talked about the updated mitigation requirements. We have a new generation study that's in the works and is, is... We have a new generation study that's in the works and is being calculated as we speak. And then, certainly, we heard very clearly, and have had follow-up conversations with folks about their continued concerns about that deferral agreement for locals, for mitigation requirements. And it's in staff's view that improvements to that are definitely necessary. And we're going to be making some recommendations for changing the agreement and where those requirements are located and kind of the relationship between community development and APCHA, kind of on managing those deferral agreements. So, the first topic of mitigation, ordinance 24 might be slightly modified the next time we talk about it, but we think it's still a major part of our response. We did talk about kind of measuring dimensions as an alternative and how we measure dimensions as an alternative to cutting floor area. We've talked about a couple of these things, but like, the way that we measure grade translates to increased mass and scale. The way that we calculate exterior spaces like patios and overhangs and decks, I know that those are pedestrian topics, but they really are a significant part of our review process. And, you know, what can be located in a setback? You know, I think to your comment of seeing development from setback to setback, in some cases, we want to be really careful about how we go about that, because, for example, if we want to be encouraging energy efficiency in a kind of a renovated, rather than torn-down, structure, we've got to give space, perhaps in a setback, to additional insulation. Because otherwise, we can't even start to pursue some of the energy outcomes that we're pursuing. So, certainly, there's space. This is definitely a topic that we're engaged in some deep thinking on right now. And then, just to get at some of the other things that were brought up in the memo, because I do think they're worth mentioning. One of the pros to this sort of, I think, approach is that we, there's a few of these things that need to happen under the moratorium. I think it's staff's recommendation that we're going to want to make sure that that mitigation ordinance comes in under the moratorium. But some of those other conversations, we can have an ongoing conversation with the architecture and design community to see what would be most effective. And some of those things, we might want to bring in under the moratorium, but other of those things can wait a few months. Certainly, we want to bring some changes to the way that we talk about demolition. We think that that's a really important response to this. We'll be bringing more details about this response at a work session in the near future. But using the GMQS system around demolition and redevelopment, including some performance standards, if you want to do this. And then, we already have in the works, building and energy code updates that are going to take our efficiency conversation much further. And then, there's a lot of things that I think, in spite of best efforts, you know, there's some things going on in our review criteria between, across departments, that I think sometimes we're working at cross-purposes to each other. And I think, I'll just give you an example. On our demolition definition, Condev Planning uses a definition for demolition. That definition is different for our building department, as they're doing their review. And engineering uses a third definition for demolition. And so, as the development community is trying to navigate the city, they're having three different conversations about demolition with three different departments. And we think that there's some real room for improvement on that topic. I've gone through, you know, we've talked about some of the pros on this, but a limited number of these things would absolutely have to occur under the moratorium. One of the things we've heard in the last, you know, week or so is really trying to find this appropriate balance of incentives and disincentives. We think there's more opportunity for cooperation, collaboration under this approach. And we do think that collectively, you know, these things stacked on top of each other could really transform Aspen's built environment. But it's not as definitive as a floor area reduction. Like, that's a pretty definitive response. And, you know, some of these things are things that aren't going to be happening in a month. Some of these things are going to take some time to develop. Okay, so I think we've heard pretty clearly in this discussion, and unless there's further comment.
I've got a quick question there for you.
Yeah, please.
Yeah, thank you. I think this is, when I say disincentives and incentives, I'm thinking of, as Skippy said, how do we encourage what we want? So, I'm thinking that fees, fund incentives, that we should be, I think, mitigating in the form of fees for demolition, for a number of other items. But I'd really like to see those fees dedicated towards incentivizing either affordable housing, whether it's a credits program, or any other form of multifamily 100% affordable. And in those incentives, I just toss out that 100, the 150 fund or the 505 funds could be in play as well. But really, like Skippy said, for probably a couple of years, we, what, we want to encourage what we want to see. And what we want to see is affordable housing. And I think what we don't want to see is big master homes that are overpowering the neighborhood. And so, as we, just from a high level, as we go forward on the mitigation and the non, not reducing the floor area ratio side of the equation, that we look at means to deliver big incentives for what we want.
As staff has worked through these topics, we've identified, obviously, affordable housing as being a primary opportunity for whatever increased mitigation to turn into public, you know, revenue to finance the delivery of public goods that we're looking for, like affordable housing. Has council conceived of any other sort of nexus between a development activity on one side and a public good that you are seeking to advance on another, be they environmental outcomes or housing outcomes, that they'd like to share with us for us to include in our thinking? Because we have, as Ben suggested, in addition to affordable housing, we're also looking at some specific environmental performance and sort of property-specific outcomes that we might seek to tie increased mitigation to with respect to compliance with, you know, higher regulations on one side, mitigation on another, should you choose to engage in a significant residential redevelopment. But has council thought through any other sort of relationships like that that you want to share with us?
Traffic generation.
First one that I thought, yeah. Another one that escapes me, but it'll come as somebody else mentions it. Rachel and then Skip.
Yeah. No, it's so funny, because when we think about traffic mitigation in general, we think, do you have enough parking spaces? When you talk residential, but that's all. Now, if it was a commercial building, they would be, well, how are you going to reduce traffic? Or something, but not residential, per se. So, that's a really good one to have thrown out there. And I think that relates more to the uses and its proximity to actual real transit corridors. I was just thinking a little about the, more of the energy use side of things. And I really don't know if this is a connection that's of value to you guys or not in this conversation. But, you know, we read so many times that so much of our energy waste is in the existing older-built environment. And a lot of our affordable housing is older-built environment, you know. And, you know, it's kind of funny, because I've had complaining about affordable housing growth and how much more do we need? And we've got 3,000 units and we'll never build our way out of the problem. But the truth is, when you take that APCHA 3,000 units apart, an awful lot of them were preserved units that were already here before I got here in '78. So, whether it's Smuggler Mountain Mobile Home Park, or Laziglan, or Aspen Village, or Woody Creek. And then, there's all sorts of conversion units, like Hunter Creek, which was Silver King, and now two-thirds are free market. But again, is there any way that any of this can, you know, without interfering with the renewable energy mitigation program and core, but be tied to energy efficiencies and upgrades or rehabilitation of the much older-built affordable housing environment?
That's certainly a nexus we can explore in our work. Thank you for that suggestion.
Thank you.
On this end?
Yeah, I'm not really sure I understood your question. I was actually raising my hand just to...
It's very poorly worded, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make kind of one statement, and then I'll, maybe you can answer it again, and I'll think if it jogs anything. But I just wanted to say, for, you know, anyone who's watching at home or later, who was here earlier, making the claim that we are not listening. A, listening and agreement are not the same thing. This is an instance, we're on a very significant issue. We are both listening and in agreement. So, I just want to make sure everyone watching is aware of that and recognizes that. Can you re-answer your question?
Yes. I'm going to do this as efficiently as possible. In addition to the relationship between residential development and redevelopment and affordable housing mitigation, are there other dynamics on residential properties that may be being redeveloped that council would seek impact mitigation for? So, an example, to Councilmember Richard's point just a moment ago, is there a relationship between, on one hand, energy performance, energy consumption in newly-developed or redeveloped residential properties? And the ability to generate revenue to mitigate for energy inefficiency in the existing housing stock? I'll take the affordable part out of the equation right now to make it a little more general.
Got it.
So, drawing a straight line between consumption on one side and mitigation to improve efficiency on another.
Yeah, so two things come to mind. They might not be actually answering your question, because you said specifically an impact fee. So, I'm drawing the nexus of relationship. This might not be the tool, and so, throw it out if it makes no sense. But the first one is to round our net zero waste goal. Ironically, as homes become more expensive, they're more likely to get scraped and replaced soon, simply because when you pay $30 million for a home, you want it to be yours, and you have enough money to make that happen. And most of the waste in our landfill being construction, I think that's something that we really need to look at, because it's just going to get worse. And then, the second is obviously related to the affordable housing, but not just on the demand side of new employee generation, but the displacement of workers as that residential structure no longer operates as residential. It changes use to vacancy or STR. And so, that displacement piece is a really big one, because, as we've said, you know, we kind of already know, we're going to 0% of our workforce in our free market. And so, we have to account for that.
So, that I'm making sure that I'm recording this properly, the concept of displacement would be from a current residential property that is owner-occupied converting into a non-owner-occupied property? And that that displacement would then have a nexus to some housing need?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
But certainly something we can explore. Thank you.
Yeah.
John?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a question about, are you looking at energy consumption during construction as well? Introducing the effects of, specifically, I was, I think I brought this up with Philip about heat blankets and so on that are necessary for building during the dead of winter. And THAZAL, the heat machine, which you can rent from Wagner Rents, they produce a tremendous amount of energy by burning a lot of, burning a lot of other energy.
I believe that construction-related emissions are included in the climate, or excuse me, in the greenhouse gas emissions inventory. I don't remember exactly which sector they, I believe they'd go into the buildings sector that those emissions are related to. But whether or not it's something that we currently mitigate for, I don't believe that it is, and that's something we can look into.
Thanks.
I think, John, just to kind of connect it to a point that was on the slide, a couple slides ago, I do think that questions like that, you know, we have a fairly sophisticated construction management plan requirement about, not just what gets built, but how it gets built. And there's all kinds of things that are included that. And I think that, you know, with some direction from council and thinking about that, I think there's a lot of things within the construction management plan that could contemplate those, you know, those kinds of impacts. About what season, you know, certain aspects of the construction process are, when are they being completed? You don't need those technologies if you're doing, you know, your foundation pour in May or June, right?
Yeah, and I'm sure you've heard this, but I think for a lot of us that were here in the '80s, it seemed like the construction season was spring to fall and winter. Nobody was shoveling snow from construction sites, they were skiing. And it made sense, too, you know? It took a lot less energy to build in that manner.
Not to jump too far ahead in our content, but the demolition as a trigger for a different set of regulations. And using the growth management allotment system, which is already in place, to address demolition as a dynamic that's driving a significant portion of what we're hearing from you as being impacts, as well as, I'll go back to that map from the growth management presentation we gave last summer, showing current permitted active projects in the community over $250,000, where demolition is likely to be triggered. And the concentration of those permits on the grid is significant. And using demolition, not only to require an allotment for demolition, but also to set performance standards, be it for construction, impact mitigation, energy consumption both during construction and on the resulting property, are things that we've conceived of at the staff level, that our consultants are studying, and that we've heard from members of the public and the development community as being potential responses to some of the dynamics. So, this conversation, I think, has been really productive for us in terms of connecting some of those dots with some of your thinking.
Excellent, thanks.
Ward, then Rachel, then Skippy?
I missed a lot.
I'm going to go back to the energy consumption side and the RIMP. And mitigate, I've got like four things here that, I don't know that we can mitigate by use. But I was wondering if, you know, by zone, where STRs may not be allowed. But what happens when you change the zone? And if you've lost mitigation for something that becomes available in a zone that wasn't previously available in? And I wonder if there's, if it's possible, just from a high level, to have scaled mitigation? That is, you get up towards a larger square footage, that there's a higher mitigation rate? And, you know, I think the county has gone with their RIMP, that they, they just, you have to put mitigation on site. For me, being, and John being on core, that it's, the RIMP fees are really important. But the other side of that is, I just feel bad, badly, that somebody can buy carbon.
I agree.
If you have all this money, you buy the carbon, you put it into the fee, and then it goes. And it helps the community, but should we be looking at increasing that RIMP rate to make it more expensive to buy carbon? Or should we be looking at, you get to a certain size, you have to be net zero on your home? And should we be looking at, from the energy side, prohibiting natural gas into a residence? Let's see if I had something else here. I think those are my big bombs right there.
Ward, just a quick response to that. I do think that those are the areas where I do think that there's a lot of opportunity to incentivize versus disincentivize. Around home size, around the energy performance of a particular home as it's being designed and built, those are definitely the things that we're working interdepartmentally within the city and talking with our consultants. And to be quite frank as well, like, Picken County's done some really good work on this topic, that we're relying on some of their data and some of the studies that they've initiated. And so, I did want to give them some credit for looking locally at energy consumption, different kinds of house sizes. And I will say that, you know, their findings are that, you know, as homes get bigger, it's not just a total energy consumption, it's a fairly significant increase by square foot above a certain threshold. So, those are the kinds of things that we're looking at. And again, these are things that might not be done under the moratorium, but things that are definitely on our work plan and things that we are engaged in some study currently and thinking about how we could get at things like that.
Yeah, those are great items. And I was thinking the exact comments, maybe some fit in now in the next three months, and some will be forthcoming. And this might fall in that same category as well. And I know how intricately our codes and APCHA are interconnected here. But what I was just thinking about a little bit is, one of the projects we're working on or looking at is the older mobile homes in Woody Creek Mobile Home Park. And there are some scenarios about how you could replace these with a much more energy-efficient home. But the net result is it's going to have bounced right up at the cap of category five and now be a $560,000 home. So that's a little challenging, knowing our demographics and our work needs. So this is just very random thinking. But what if someone's mitigation was to replace a much older mobile home with a brand-new mobile home? And potentially taking it from a two-bedroom to a three-bedroom? Now, that third bedroom may or may not be available right off the bat if that was replacing a, a couple's little two-bedroom. But it would be adding a bedroom to the inventory for eventually. And that's something we're actually looking at with the whole empty bedroom syndrome of how many were people who decided that it was time to get a new mobile home and as long as they're putting the money in, might as well have added a third bedroom? But they weren't required to, and, and it didn't become vacant by nefarious means. It, it actually is just something we have to wait for that to hit the market again before someone uses it. But we don't prohibit a couple of two from putting in a three-bedroom. And I think a lot of the older Aspen Village mobile homes in lazy glens and over the time have, have happened. So we, we haven't dug into those sort of exact numbers. But I was just thinking, whether it's with the credit program or is mitigation, is there a way that money could be channeled to specific items that are both energy efficiency and then potentially adding capacity? So it's just a thought. It might fit under the credits program. I don't know.
Rachel actually just mentioned something that relates to what I was going to say, which is just, you know, I, I've had this conversation, I don't know, probably five, six years ago. It was like the first time I, I ran in 17. And it was just in the trailer park, in the free market trailer park. But in the trailer park with a local individual who was born and raised in that trailer, parents passed on, you know, and really wants to stay in the community. But the thing is, is literally falling apart. And the, you know, sort of the, the fees and process associated with putting a new trailer there are like the same price as the trailer, works a normal job. So the only option is sell and leave, right? So just throwing, I think it's a really important point for affordable, but also for that very small segment of our free market that still exists and actually houses real working locals. Not to unintentionally sort of take that away through these fees. I think it's just a really important, really important thing. And, and to that end, which is what I was just going to kind of draw a little bit more thinking out on that displacement piece and how we go about addressing that. And I don't want to take anything off the table for you guys. You know, I think about this instead of sleep. You guys, I do it for work. So you guys should lead on this. But when, when a use changes from actual residential working local to non-residential vacant or STR, you know, I think we would be wise, for that same reason, to have a fee or an impact or a tax that addresses that new use on an annual basis rather than takes that dollar at the time of development? Because if it happens at the time of development, it lives on forever as an artificially inflated value of that property. And so in the future, when a local worker wants to go into that place, you know, they're, they're, they're bearing the brunt of that as opposed to if the, the fee or the impact lives with the use on an annualized basis, then it's landing where we intended to.
Skippy, I think the only place in our work that we're currently addressing that, and I think it's been in the code for a while, the 2015 Residential Generation Study. And I think the work that we're thinking about and is being conducted right now in this update, I think does acknowledge, in a redevelopment scenario, it doesn't get at a sale from a local to a, to, to, to a non-local. But I do think that the expectations of the future operations and maintenance employee generation is fully taken into account in our, in our current generation and then I think what's, what's being anticipated kind of in this update. So that's the one place where there's, I think, an acknowledgement that this house that a local was living in that cut their own lawn and, and did their own landscaping and, you know, washed their own dishes and what that house might become in a redevelopment scenario. I think it's captured there to some degree in terms of generation. It doesn't get at the displacement topic. And I think that it's a...
Sounds like a good start.
It's a, but, but I think, I think getting at what you're suggesting, I think there's a, there's a couple paths to that. But I think there, it would be, it would require some creative thinking.
And that, that relationship between the sort of ownership and occupancy of a residential structure and how the zoning code would treat it from a, from a use standpoint, right? Not aware of a legal precedent for, for calling vacancy STR a land use as distinct from, you know, owner occupied, lived-in residential property. And so we, we hear you and I think as Ben's suggesting, the way we look at use patterns with respect to affordable housing mitigation from a legal standpoint is about as close as we can get right, right now to making that distinction. And that's aside from the tax issue, which I, I hear you about.
Yep. Cool. Ready for that election?
All right. We've talked extensively about, in this process, figuring out ways to further promote affordable housing. And the piece of these three, the land use code can be a barrier to predictable age development. Can we identify additional incentives for the private sector development? And do we want to continue a system of age development that relies on, on more development? That kind of development that maybe we, we'd like to be discouraging? I think that the, the things that we can approach here are probably that top box where we are trying to identify areas in the land use code that we think currently serve as a barrier to serve as a foundation to a, a lot of other things that we could be doing. Again, in kind of stacking incentives. It's a phrase that our consultant likes to use. Kind of stacking, stacking incentives on top of things. There's some foundational things that I think we need to do to set the, the playing field, whether for public sector affordable housing development or for private sector affordable housing development. And the memo outlined these pretty clearly. And just to have a fairly, you know, we, we can again get into, to the weeds on any of these topics. But there are these three questions, and, and they, I think they're, they're foundational to our thinking about how to approach this topic and, and what we want to include under the moratorium particularly. The first is this idea of, of taking what is currently a board review for affordable housing. The project, you know, could comply in every way, whether it be residential design standards, the dimensions of the underlying zone district. If that was a free market, single-family home, it would be straight to building permit. But the land use code currently requires for an affordable housing project to go to a board review for two things. One is growth management review to get the, even though we don't have a limit on, on affordable housing allotments, we still require that review. And then secondly, in the issuance of affordable housing credits, if it's a, if it's a credits project, both of those things are, are required to go to a board. Either Planning and Zoning Commission or HPC. And so our proposal here is to kind of flip the script a little bit where if you're 100% affordable and you're meeting a set of performance standards and review criteria, dimensional standards, that you're either, and I, I think this is something we haven't landed on, exactly which of these options it would be, is, is that an administrative review? Which is, you know, a fundamentally different and more predictable land use review, but still allows staff to take a really close look at a project as we do all the time on a lot of different things? Or does it simply like free market, go straight to building permit? If we can verify that the, the, the design, the performance, the dimensions of, of the 100% affordable housing project, you know, are in line with, with the expectations that we set? This would be a big change for us. And I think in staff's view, it is a step that we could take to respond to some of the critiques that we've heard that we want to do the right thing. We'd like to try to build affordable housing, and yet you're making it really difficult for us. And we think that this would be a step in alleviating some of those obstacles and making it a more predictable process for people.
And, and just to dig into that a little bit more, to Councilmember Mesro's point about, about, about listening to people, this is a response to specific feedback we've gotten from numerous, either affordable housing developers or prospective affordable housing developers over the years. So, you know, we're not making this up. This is absolutely something that the folks working in this space feel like would move the needle for them in terms of, of how their pro forma can work or not in town. And in terms of, of, of that sort of comparison between how we treat single-family residential versus multifamily residential, multifamily affordable residential, you, you know, there are standards that single-family homes have to meet. They, they can't develop, and there are setbacks. They have to meet height requirements and floor area requirements. So there are robust regulations that are applied to development review that goes straight to building permit or goes through a, an administrative process as opposed to a board process. And so we're not suggesting that there would be any less scrutiny applied to these affordable housing projects. What we are suggesting, and I, I'm just going to take an opportunity to name it, is avoiding scenarios like we've seen in the not-too-distant past, where projects that objectively comply with city regulations for development are nonetheless forced to engage in a process that, at least in some of our stakeholders' inputs views, is not commensurate with the impact of the project to the community and the value of the project to the community. And so staff feels really strongly that, that there's a potential here for meeting a number of complementary needs.
Yeah, thank you. I clearly understand what you're saying. I think that there might be a size limitation that would be more appropriate. I mean, I, I don't know what the Centennial rental ownership people are going to come back with. We saw some preliminary stuff. It might be 100% affordable, but it might be too much or it might be all RO or it might be something else. And I think that that's of a magnitude that our community would want us to weigh in on it. And how does it look and how does it fit into the neighborhoods? So there might be a size threshold about when it could be an administrative review. I think that would potentially be important. I do hear what you're saying about equity of treatment and process on development types. And so the more simplification that we can get here, the better. The other kind of factor that comes into it for me, and maybe this has changed over time and I'm a little out of touch, but we have the Affordable Housing Zone District, which is used to increase the number of potential free markets that someone can have on their property to make the pro forma work, to build the affordable, like Alpine cottages or the Little Vic or something like that. And so when you get into those projects, which are both mixed free market and affordable, and, and you already are in a, in a place where you're changing side yard setbacks and, and some of these things, it, it might be more important to have a review. I just don't know. But I think that is worth looking at. The other kind of final thing would be to say, look at the Affordable Housing Zone District to say, can that be improved to allow greater density than it does now? And the Affordable Housing Zone District is an overlay over the entire town. People have to just apply up to use it. And, and so that's what I was wondering is really, are there, are there ways to strengthen and be more generous with the number of units or the density allowed when people take advantage of the AH zone district?
There's a, on, on that specific scenario, staff is, is, is looking at this concept of how do we incentivize more affordable housing? Both from a sort of dimensional standpoint, unit and a sort of density and intensity standpoint, unit count, building size, but also from a process standpoint. And what we're suggesting here is a process response that would, may or may not have anything to do with the specific dimensions of a project. And, and then to your first comment about a, a sort of size limitation for a straight to permit or an administrative review option, have you conceived it all about the relationship between the existing zoning and the size limitation that that creates versus what it sounds like you're suggesting that might be a separate standard for qualifying for the straight to permit or administrative option?
I guess, without being able to speak as well in the professional jargon. You know, it seems that, you know, you start getting far more complications on any given site and any neighborhood impact as the size increases. And, you know, I'm already hearing from people in the community about our current process that does allow free market to go straight to permit at times when they're fully compliant. And they don't feel that, as neighbors, that they've been able to say something to P and Z, but not to council. And so we hear, hear that a lot. And, and that's, so what, what I'm suggesting is that beyond a certain size, I think the community will want to weigh in in a way that's not just administrative. And whether that's Centennial example or some other example we, we're not thinking of right now. But, you know, I, again, I'm trying to say I'm, I'm very, very much interested in trying to find simplified processes. But to say it can go straight to administrative, and if we later say, well, we're going to double the intensity allowed in the AH zone, maybe those two start to create conflict where it should have some public review and more opportunity to weigh in. That, that's all I was thinking.
Yeah, that, that makes perfect sense.
Okay, thank you.
And, and Rachel, all I would say otherwise is a, you know, a project like Centennial, you know, and I, again, I think it's, it's right to say we, we don't know exactly what's happening there. But it's something of that scale. And certainly, so that process would go through a plan development process, which would require multiple stages of review. Now, that's dependent, but, but if it was fully compliant, I think it, it gets to your point. The PD sort of is asking for variations, and so I, I understand that. I will say, under current, current code and the way that the process is, is operating, that the Affordable Housing Plan Development Zone District overlay, in order to have that sort of apply, right now that, that requires a rezoning process.
Yeah.
And again, opening it up to, you know, I, I think sometimes what is otherwise a project that we want to be encouraging opens it up to, I think, you know, criticism that other kinds of development isn't open to.
I think it's great that we're peeling back the layers because maybe now what you're really talking about is a sim, more simplified process to get into the Affordable Housing Zone District. And as well as look at, you know, are there greater incentives that can be put in the Affordable Housing Zone District? Thank you.
Yeah. So very much appreciate and, and support this for things that are going, that, that meet all of our requirements. Going right to, to building permit. It's just never made sense to me that the thing that we, we say we least want can just show up. But the thing that we most want, if you are someone who wants to bring it forward, we ask you to go through sometimes years of process, of time, of cost, of community or neighbor criticism. Not to mention just sort of being up here doing this thing over and over. I mean, they're, they're really big cost, time and experiential impediments. So I'm very supportive of this. And Rachel, I'm so glad you, you brought that up because when I've been thinking about this, I've really been thinking about the, you know, the, the residential neighborhood where instead of getting a house by right, we're getting, you know, four, eight, or, you know, maybe 10 affordable housing units. I really wasn't imagining this for something the scale of the lumberyard or Centennial.
I know.
So I think that's a really, really good point. And I don't know exactly where that, you know, cutoff is. Is it, is it, you know, 25 units? Is it 40 units? You know, I think it's certainly 50 or more units. So I don't know exactly how that works, whether that's an automatic review or maybe it's a call-up opportunity like we have with HPC. But I would agree with the, the sentiment that you had that we want the opportunity to have eyes on these bigger, more impactful projects.
Ward, and then John?
A couple of things. I think there, there should be an appeal process here, mechanism. I, I support...
Appeal, a, a call-up or appeal?
Well, if the administrative decision goes differently, that we, that there's a process where it is, call it a, a call-up or an appeal. But that, that leads to my second point. Is that final authority, where does that rest? We saw where final authority that did not rest was city council caused the community an affordable housing unit. So I'm, I've said this for years, final authority should, should rest at city council. But I, I think that expediting the process to building permit, I certainly support it. Certainly where the project meets all the criteria for underlying zoning, where there are no variances needed. That, that, that should proceed quickly. But just the two things, a final authority and an appeal process or call-up process.
Thanks, Ward. John?
Yeah, I agree with everyone here at the table. I think this is a step in the right direction. And I agree with Rachel's comment about... I think this is a step in the right direction, and I agree with Rachel's comment about size and Ward's comments about not giving final review to volunteer boards.
My comments on this, my comments on this are pretty short. Yes.
Love it. I did too much talking.
Okay.
I always do, it's okay.
So this is a kind of next step down the path. I will go back, one of our consultants is on the line right now, Eric Krungold, and he and Design Workshop did some really great analysis for us several months ago now, looking at multifamily replacement. And, you know, one of the things that he identified is that, you know, some of the economic aspects of that are difficult, the replacement and the affordable housing requirements are sometimes not sort of aligned with kind of the redevelopment or coming out of, in the end, with additional affordable housing. But what we did clearly identify is that there's a lot of places in town where I think the community might expect there would be affordable housing that was permitted and by right and you could do, you know, in the Lodge Zone District, for example, kind of up against the base of the mountain. And then getting away from town, sort of in the R6 Zone Districts, there's some sort of non-conforming, existing multifamily, free market properties. So I think that's one aspect of this ask is, you know, are there places in town where currently affordable housing is maybe not a permitted use or at best is maybe a conditional use where they, again, have to go through a review process to get at? So I think that this question is asking about those kinds of scenarios, but I think it's also asking about, can we rethink in either certain neighborhoods or across the city, by zone district? And I think one of the things we heard really clearly in our outreach this last week is that the answer to this question across the folks that we talked to was, by and large, absolutely yes. Affordable housing should be allowed any place in the city, and we should be encouraging it any place in the city. But there was a caveat sort of that came after that, as long as it's sort of at the scale of the neighborhood. And so when we suggest this, we're not suggesting Centennial density or Lumber Yard density every place across the city, but that we find creative ways to start to plug in opportunity. Again, we can create the opportunity of these kinds of things. We're going to need to stack incentives on top of this. But this would be another step in sort of providing the kind of foundational opportunity to start to identify areas particularly within the roundabout that there are currently zone district obstacles to facilitating that. One, because multifamily isn't a permitted use, but also in places that might not, right now, be a place that you could imagine as anything other than a single family or duplex. So this is kind of a general question, but it applies to kind of several different potential affordable housing development scenarios.
Just a few clarifying questions. I think it's on the slide. But when you say any zoning, you mean places where development's currently allowed, correct?
Yeah, I would not suggest designated open space.
Yeah, that's, just making sure before I'm saying yes to that.
Thank you for that. I should have been more precise.
Just making sure.
You guys are catching up with the lingo. You guys are catching up with the, you guys are catching up with the lingo.
I'm a slow learner, but I do learn. The second question is, you know, when I think about this generally, the answer is yes. When I think about the commercial, though, I mean, the one outcome that I think would be a bad outcome is, you know, CCC1, all of a sudden, commercial use is displaced by all affordable housing. Like, if it's two stories commercial versus two stories commercial and one story affordable, like, fine, but I can't imagine an economic situation wherever there would be an actual displacement. But I just want to confirm you agree with that?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure. So, yeah, I guess, so I guess hearing that, my answer is a strong yes. I agree with the community, you know, I think we need it and places to go. As it relates to fitting in with community character, in general, I agree. But I think we need to be really clear with the community and present to them what we need to reach our housing goals, right? To like, look at that equation and say, hey, you know, to actually get housing developed here by non-city individuals with non-city dollars soon, you know, here's what it would take. There are certainly scenarios where the answer to that is one that none of us would support, right? None of us are going to support a five or 10-story building in a residential neighborhood. And so you said, you know, we're going to have to stack some incentives, maybe money on top of that, that's fine. But if there's a scenario where going from four units to five, or, you know, 22 feet to 25 feet means that these projects can happen on their own, I just think we need to really communicate with people and not just say like, hey, the neighbors get to say, ooh, I only want 15 feet, so that's what neighborhood compatibility means. It's going to them and saying, hey, we appreciate that this is a little bit outside, but this will mean that we're actually going to get to our housing goals in 15 years instead of never. And can you be understanding and acceptable of that? And would you be if it wasn't next door to you, but in that neighborhood too? So I just want us to be really specific with people as we get this feedback, sensitive in agreement with fitting in with the neighborhood. But, you know, if the balance point is a little bit more for community survival, then, you know, we may need to stretch a little bit.
My answer to the question is yes. Any opportunity on the side of the roundabout is what we should be pursuing.
Any comments on this end?
I support this.
Yes, I support this. And again, I want a little bit of a dive into the AH Zone District, what we can do to make that better.
Mm-hmm. Agreed.
On that topic, just while we're on it, we had a conversation with council about a narrowly proposed code amendment about the RMF Zone District where the, we were, you know, I think the ask was about the trade-off between sort of new development and affordable housing mitigation. And what we heard pretty clearly from council at the time was that, you know, we're for, you know, we're for multifamily, we're for using land more efficiently or whatever, but we're not interested in giving additional density for free market multifamily adjacent to affordable housing, new affordable housing, and that that trade-off was not something that council was interested in at the time. Because we, there wasn't a proposal to sort of include 100% requirement. And that's one of the concerns that I have about the AHPD development, is that it requires that trade-off to make that, that current thinking about that specific zone district, that's entirely what it's based on, off of, is finding that trade-off between free market and affordable housing development. And so I understand, you know, the discussion about that, but I think that that conversation with council shaped some of my thinking about this topic, because what we're proposing here is really about 100% affordable.
Yeah.
And it's, it just becomes more complicated to think a little, to think about that appropriate balance between, you know, if we are going to go into the AHPD Zone District, the existing one, and try to sort of find more incentive or try to whatever, in that relationship between free market and affordable on a particular property. It's not that we would get rid of it and preclude someone from pursuing that, but this is really about, you know, as we've been thinking about this, really is about kind of 100%, affordable sort of opportunities. And I just would, you know, if the perception about this topic or the thinking about this topic has changed from council, I think it would be good, good direction at this time. But this is really about 100% affordable sort of opportunities, and we're not proposing that, again, that relationship between sort of free market and affordable and trying to find a balance within a particular, within a particular development.
And if I can just add to that with respect to the conversation about the sort of math equation, right, and the pro forma associated with building affordable housing, it is just the case that if you can include some amount of free market residential in a multifamily development, our ability to realize affordable housing units in association with that goes up considerably. And so again, as we're, as we're thinking about the relationship between zoning and density and neighborhood character, and how many units can be brought to market by the private sector, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that having that mixed product changes the math and will be another sort of meaningful incentive to bring affordable housing to bear for the community. Rachel?
Yeah, just a follow-up. Just a follow-up. No, I really appreciate what you're saying there, Ben, and I didn't mean to get off topic of how do we get the 100%, but we're not repealing the Affordable Housing Zone District. It's something there that people still can use. And when you get to the idea that there's only X many vacant lots or potential demolitions, some people might look at this, developers, and say, hey, great idea to do a housing credit program, and others might say, hey, great idea to do this. And so the only reason I said it's, we're looking at, was should the ratio change that you have to have more affordables for the free market you get? You know, maybe, maybe that is something that it's not pursuing more, but it's actually changing that program to be a little less of the free market and more affordable to use that program. That's a possibility.
Yes.
The other thing, I was just kind of thinking, and I don't know that it works, but is there a way that it is part of an affordable housing credit program that then gets us category two housing credits instead of category three, fours, and fives? Because we're trying to get more of the units for the jobs that don't pay that much in this community. So that's all I was thinking. Is there a way to tinker around the edges of it that make it more productive as well?
I think that's a good suggestion. Thank you.
And you're very fluent. The whole thing about the categories, it still melts my brain, like, what categories are required for different types of development? And you clearly have a firmer grasp of that than I do, so thank you.
Yeah, yeah. But I mean, if all the affordable housing credit programs come in with category fours, they're for families with incomes of $175,000 a year. That's not getting us very far along right now. Thank you.
Yep. Ben, thanks for bringing up that, I think that was a SISN initiative for zoning change. And I sense, I know Skippy had this as his big question, is are we talking about affordable multifamily or free market? And I think if the answer had been affordable, that that might have proceeded. That's, that's my sense on that one. So, and that was, also had about some non-conforming lots who are a bit smaller. So as we look at adding 100% affordable to perhaps some of those non-conforming lots, I would certainly entertain them. And this, I mean, we're kind of coming back to mix free market and AH, which basically is ADUs, which I think we want to encourage that either as a housing credit, but certainly that they are used, that they don't just sit there.
And then this last question, if yes to the last slide, and it seemed that there was support kind of in general for the last slide with some caveats and some more specificity. But this is getting about, this last question, is that if we are going to sort of create opportunity across the city for affordable housing that is compatible with the underlying zone district and the dimensions that are there, if we're talking about 100% affordable housing projects, should those, other than the number of units that are present, should all the other dimensional requirements in that zone district be adhered to for these projects? Or should there be some flexibility granted to 100% affordable projects, as long as they're generally respectful and taking into account what the neighborhood context is?
Hmm. Skippy?
Oh, thank you. I just want to, you know, confirm kind of Ward's point, just that, as it relates to the AH overlay, when I was saying, you know, I support looking into that, what I was thinking is, you know, we've talked about getting away from the getting what we want by what we don't want. And so my saying, yes, I want to look at that, was not saying, hey, I want to double down on that strategy. I don't, I want to get further away from it. But that overlay allows us to take those new rules that can layer with those other things and spread them around. So that's kind of what I was, what I was saying. As to this, the second one for sure, though, just to be a little nitpicky on words, just flexibility, I don't think you meant it in that sense of openness. But I, you know, what I don't want to do is say, these are the standards for the zone districts for AH, come negotiate with us. Do I want us to look at having allowances that are greater than for the things we want? Sure. But I want to actually set and codify those and check in with the community about those and have a justification for those, and then allow those projects to move forward. So different, yes, flexible, if that makes sense?
Yeah.
It made sense to me. John?
I think if we could give them a little added incentive, such as dimensional flexibility, that would be a positive.
Thanks, John.
Yeah, I think this circles back to what we were talking about, upzoning for single families. So, yeah, within bounds, within reasonable bounds, I'm certainly supportive of it.
You meant AH, not single family, right?
Both. Yeah, earlier we were talking about in a lot that-
Okay. Got it.
Yes.
Tori started a trend. It won't last long, don't worry about it.
I will skip past my pro and con slide, so, because I don't know that I have further convincing that you do. I will say, and I do think that as, you know, we're certainly cognizant of the community that we live in and some of the conversations that are happening, and some of the concerns that people have raised, like, you know, when we, when we hear about affordable housing, we hear about parking, we hear about mass and scale, we hear about community character. And I do think that those conversations are, you know, I think important for the community to have, but it does seem that if we were to go down some of the paths on these things, that, that, you know, the ability of public and neighbors to sort of have input on, you know, from one project to the next would be less than it is today. And I think we need to sort of acknowledge that and be thoughtful about how we, you know, make sure that the things that we're putting in place are compatible and, you know, that we're having a conversation with the community about what are those appropriate areas of flexibility or not. So I think that that's, that's good, that's good feedback.
Other comments?
You know, I think you were saying this, but just to be a little more explicit, any of these projects would be posting on their site as normal, and they would be giving information as to how to contact to see the plans or whatever, and how to submit comments to the administrative review, should they wish to.
Yeah, I will, just for clarity, under our current noticing requirements, that public notice happens after the administrative approval is granted. So there's a notice that the administrative approval has been granted. If there is a desire to, you know, provide information to neighbors, you know, we could certainly contemplate that, but under our current land use review process, if it's administrative, you know, the notice happens once that administrative review is recorded. And there is a, there is a newspaper notice, we currently don't notice those to neighbors. So if there is a desire to give, you know, absent sort of participates, participation in a board review process and a public hearing, and a desire to inform the neighbors about a, you know, a particular project, we'd have to come up with some standards around that.
I mean, I'm just thinking that if we're making a pretty big change here in terms of process, maybe that process will need to change to have a little more consistency and concurrency with it.
And our current noticing requirements do not have any public notice associated with a project that's going straight to building permit.
And I understand that, but we're making new code.
Absolutely.
And it seems to me that if we're talking about the potential for administrative review for projects that are below 50 units and are going to have some dimensional flexibility, I think the neighbors need to have some idea what that plan is before that review is completed and have a chance to offer any comments. It just, I mean, I don't want to get to where this is automatic, no matter what, at that level. I mean, we're now saying affordable housing is permitted by right as opposed to special review or not allowed at all. review or not allowed at all in multiple new neighborhoods. And so I think we need to bring all of our processes up to speed at the same time.
I will say that we took a similar notice approach with the rollout of 5G small cell facilities.
Yeah.
Where we took something that previously didn't have any notice requirements and created specific notice requirements. And it was really an inform, it was an inform kind of public notice, not encouragement. There's no public hearings associated with them. But we did, you know, at least let the neighbors kind of in a particular radius know that the project was there and that we put some signs up and we did a newspaper notice. So it could be that, you know, one of the trade-offs for kind of going down this path is that we pursue a notice, you know, regime that's kind of similar to that.
Are there other council members who would like to see a proposal for noticing in conjunction with some of the changes around the review process for 100 percent affordable projects?
Yeah, I think if we're looking at making some of those flexible moves, we're increasing some dimensional, yeah, that there should be a notice. I support that.
Skippy and then John?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, we're moving to buy right to reduce the complexity of these things, so I think that actually hinders that. I'm sensitive to the changes that are happening and bringing people along in that. So, you know, I think really the next three months are our opportunity to get buy-in and really have those, you know, future neighbors involved in the process of creating these new rules and having buy-in in them. So I guess, you know, I guess my way of informing people would be to like really actively bring people into the conversation around these specifics during this process and have them have their, you know, their hand on the ink and on the pen as well. And then maybe, yeah, maybe there's some transitional period, but I would be reticent to say forever we need to do something like that, because I think it sort of undermines the goal. And then to that point, and this is maybe more just to pass along to the public outreach team, I think all perspectives on this are important. But I want to be mindful and as intentional as we can to get a balanced perspective, not just have the room packed with the uber wealthy, you know, landowner next door who, you know, is going to sue at anything, but also the people who need housing and the community members who are already here. And just, you know, let that balance dictate what is appropriate for the community with very clear staff guidance on what it's actually delivering to us in terms of housing goals, community mix, character, and all that sort of stuff. How did we get to this dimensionality that we're reviewing and what does it benefit? And if we are going to scale that back for neighborhood compatibility, what does that mean in terms of how many more public dollars would need to go in to balance that? And how many units does that pull out of another development or other goals that we have in value as well? Just so people, you know, really understand what we're talking about.
Couple of different points there. Did you get those?
Yes.
Yeah, I just think having some public and neighborhood input is the right thing to do, and it decreases the perception that we're operating from the wrong place, I guess is what I want to say. We've been accused of, various councils, not just this one, of operating like a fiefdom or something like that. So I think having neighbor input is important.
Your lips are moving. I just can't hear what you're saying.
I'm not saying them yet. I was trying to figure out how I was gonna say it. I do think that, you know, we've heard the concerns. I do think that, you know, one of the outcomes that we're trying to achieve is to put kind of free market development, affordable housing development on the same page. I do understand the sort of certain impacts of kind of multifamily. I mean, these are conversations that are happening in every community in the country right now. And it's been a contentious conversation to have this conversation. The places that have implemented this kind of thinking around affordable housing, it's been successful. They've implemented new units. I think that the model that we're using most directly is Cambridge, Massachusetts, and they're having success a couple of years after, you know, implementing these kinds of responses. But I do, you know, we'll give some thought to how to sort of find this balance of being able to have conversations with neighbors and having a project be neighborly and also not putting requirements on affordable housing development that aren't, you know, we're applying to sort of, or not applying to other kinds of development outcomes. So we'll give some further thought to that, but the concerns have been heard for sure. It's a balance.
Yeah. And thank you. That actually summarizes my comments as I leave it to you guys. I definitely think that there's the avenue for neighbor input on the front side of this development, but I really look to you guys as kind of striking that balance.
And again, just to reiterate, this was said pretty clearly in the memo, but these things are not going to be a panacea. These things by themselves are not going to be producing lots of affordable housing units because of the economics of this town. But we do see this, these three things as kind of necessary foundationally to making improvements to the credits program, figuring out, you know, the best use of the 150 fund as we try to sort of come up with some, you know, we've used the term development neutral outcomes. This kind of thinking gives a lot of opportunity to several of those other improvements that could be made.
And just to, you know, in the way I think about it, these are really having nutrient-rich soil, right? These allow things to grow, but they are not the seed or the sapling in and of themselves. You know, changing the GMQS calculation so that there's more need or demand is like adding sunshine and water to this, right? If we begin to tax our fees on vacancy or STR, we'll maybe put the seed in. But this is creating the soil for these things to grow from, and will allow all the other interventions to be more effective in the future. So I think it's important that we get them right.
Let me come back to this. I wanted to do a little bit about next steps and what you're going to be hearing from us on. First of all, we're engaged in ongoing engagement. Philip and I both have kind of one-on-one conversations ongoing. And then we intend to come back to the community early to mid-April with these policy questions more defined, you know, following our analysis, following our consultant's analysis, following the outreach that we've heard so far, and then coming back with some more specific things before we come back to you with specific code changes that we're going to be suggesting. Our consultant analysis continues. And then lastly, we've got a series of meetings coming to you in the next few weeks where we are going to be talking about all of these things in a little bit more detail. So with that, let me go back to my previous slides. Anything that we didn't have a chance to talk about tonight that's on your minds on these topics that we should be considering as we start to put pen to paper?
And I'll just remind council to that we're staff sort of compartmentalizing topics and bringing those to you in digestible or hopefully digestible pieces. So this is distinct from short-term rentals. We have more discussion to have around other topics as well, so just want to make sure we put some brackets around the question.
Right, understood. Understood. Rachel and then Ward.
Okay, I only have something fairly simple now.
You never have anything fairly simple.
Fairly simple. I'll have more before by time everyone's finished. On April 5th, I'm not going to be here, just so you know, y'all are four-person council. But looking at the calendar, it made me think, I wonder if we should start reserving some extra days for meeting towards the end of May or beginning of June, alternate Wednesday nights when we don't have APCHA.
Good idea.
Or something like that. But, you know, these are going to be some pretty meaty discussions, and we can always cancel if we don't need extra days, but it might be worth taking a look at that calendar at the end of May and beginning of June. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and we're working very closely with the manager's office to make sure that the schedule meets everybody's needs.
We want to give you guys all the time you need.
Thank you.
Ward?
Yeah, other thoughts? Skippy alluded to this earlier. We had a meeting at noon with a number of community, people here with community engagement at that point. I'm just, for the people that said we haven't done anything, what have you done? You haven't done anything in the last three months. I want them to be here. I want them to see the process. I want them to be engaged early on, to appreciate what our staff has done and the time, the two hours now this afternoon that we've put into this with the good of the community in mind. And what we're trying to do, I think, is valuable work. And it just, it's upsetting to me when somebody comes in at the very last moment or after a decision is made and say, you didn't listen to us. So become engaged, see what's going on, see what your taxpayer dollars are doing, what your staff is doing, what we're being presented with, the discussions that we're having. I just really want the community to be engaged in this.
Thanks, Ward. Other thoughts?
Sure. Yeah, I really appreciate what Ward said, you know, that the dynamic can often be like if you were going to a five-star restaurant, 23-course tasting menu, but it's like six minutes before the appetizers come out, and you're like, they haven't done anything. You're like, well, they've been kind of cooking for like seven days. So there's a bit of that going on. I think there's also frankly a bit of a legacy, and I hope you guys don't take any offense to this, of, you know, governments expecting people to come to us. And so I think, you know, we are really being proactive about going out to people, and I think that's really important. I think that's our opportunity for improvement is just to really go out at people. You know, the thought I had the other day when Bill was here with all of his signatures is like, wouldn't it be great if we could work with him to reach out to as many of those people directly as possible and just say, hey, we understand you have some concerns. This is your opportunity to play a part in the outcomes, and if you don't, that's your choice, but the outcomes are happening, so come on into the tent. So I think, you know, that's sort of our opportunity, and I hope we really take that. Other thoughts that came to mind, things I'm grateful for, a staff that is brilliant, super dedicated, cares about and of this community, a council that has awesome alignment right now that I'm really proud of, and the fact that it's light out and we're finishing a work session.
That's what happens when you take a bunch of items off of it.
And daylight savings. Oh, and also, sorry, Rachel, I think your suggestion's a great one. I'd love to get extra stuff, even if it's just placeholders on there. I think we're really committed to seeing this finish on time, and I don't want...
Make extra commitments that end of the month.
I don't want us to be the limiting factor, us being the five of us at this table. That shouldn't happen. And I don't want to, personally, I don't want to be making really impactful detailed policy decisions in the fifth hour of a meeting when my brain's not working. I'd rather space it out if needed.
John?
Yeah, I just wanted to say regarding our earlier meeting today that it was eye-opening to me how many of the people who came here to speak today were uninformed about the difference between the STR moratorium and our residential building moratorium, the repeated question of what is the emergency. Clearly, many of these people had not read the newspapers. We have two papers in town. I'm hoping the public can meet us halfway and, when they come to our meetings, be informed as to what we are actually talking about. It would help our side of the table greatly. Thanks to our dedicated staff, too. I know you guys are putting in a lot of extra time on this, and that is unseen by the community. So I'd like to point it out. Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Nice.
Other thoughts from me? My thanks to you. This presentation was as clear and concise and digestible as really it could have been. So you're doing a great job. If the rest of our sessions are similar to this, we're set up for success. I really believe that. I also just wanted to say that I think that these are answering some of those questions that we heard this afternoon and over the last day or two, people wondering, what are you working on? What are you doing? You know, we heard it from a couple of people that were like, I've been to the outreach, I've been to the outreach seminars, and they're not telling me what you're doing. And it's like, it's an outreach. We're asking your opinion before we fill your head with our opinions. So these are starting to get at some of those questions that people have about what are you talking about and what are you working on? This is how this process works. We do this in open work sessions. We do this with all five of us at the table when we can be here, and this is how information is shared. We specifically try not to get out in front of our own process, because in the end, that can be detrimental to us. So as this is unfolding for us, you know, we definitely know a little bit more what's going on behind the scenes, but this is also where our community is learning about it as well. Anyway, again, my thanks to you and a great presentation this evening. Keep it up. Then I'm going to come back to Rachel, because she might have had a couple of other items.
No, no, no.
Oh, one more thing.
I think that's it for this evening on this topic, then.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks for your work.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
We'll see in about six weeks, Ward. You can save your sentiments until you feel a little better.
Counsel, we have just a couple of minutes until the hour. We are noticed for our special meeting to go into executive session at 6:00. So I assume that we will just hang here for a moment while we do that procedure.
I have a council update. If I could use some of that time, please?
Sounds great.
Fantastic.
A few members of council requested to have the Ukrainian flag flown at the armory, and we checked in with the Ninth District Court. There's just some etiquette around displaying the flag of another nation under the court system of which judicial process is happening. And so the response I received, I would say was not enthusiastic, but willing to accommodate if it would be willing to be on the exterior on the Hopkins side, pretty much as far away as possible from their entrance for court proceedings. Let me know what you want to do. And then secondly, we do have some ability to place blue and yellow lights on the Wheeler windows and on the Pepke gazebo as perhaps some alternatives for you to consider. So when the council has a position, just let me know, and we'll either do something or do nothing, depending upon what you say.
Okay, so the lights at Pepke and at the Wheeler are something that's moving forward under Sarah's guidance. The real question here is...
I'm asking for direction, because this is a political statement. This isn't an administrative function to do this.
Let's start with the lights, then. Are you guys supportive of colored lighting and the colors of the Ukrainian flag? Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, as long as it conforms to our lighting code.
I propose, please?
It likely will not conform to the lighting code, which is why I am checking in with you.
You know, I don't know how many years ago it was, but we did a lot of Light It Up Pink for breast cancer, and that was county buildings, city buildings, and others. I'm okay with it. If we have to get a variance for the lighting, I think it's appropriate, and I would do all three. Thank you.
Thanks. So lighting, I think we're a go with. Yeah, I think that this rises to the level of importance that lighting codes are not, that something tasteful, of course, is going to be done, but I think this would be a great show of our support, and I think it's appropriate that we do that. Let's talk about the flag real quickly. You know, the idea, the flag actually currently is in my window at my house, hanging so people outside can see it. It was brought to us by Michael Barron, and he really said this would be great on city facility to show the city unified in this support. He mentioned the armory, not knowing necessarily that we had an outstanding lease with the county, et cetera. So when I spoke to Sarah, I said, Sarah, if you can check on this, see if it's possible. If that's not possible, maybe our flag pole out here or whatever it may be. So the alternative here is on the armory building, but not at that front entrance on the Hopkins Avenue side.
How big a flag is it, Tori? Just standard flag size?
Actually, probably a little smaller than these.
It's about a three by five. Maybe a little more.
Well, it's probably not going to look very big.
It's not going to...
And no one goes in that way to see it.
It is not a big flag.
Okay.
Be right on here. Sitting home?
Well, our flag poles are down on Rio Grande there, and again, it's a small flag. So if it was on a pole back here, it would be as, it would really not be noticed that much.
It doesn't look like it'll make it through a couple of snowstorms.
Good point.
We're happy to hang it from the overhang or under the overhang on the Hopkins side if the council would like us to do that.
Try it?
Again, it's separate from the court entrance. And then in terms of for duration, we'll just make a note to check in in about 30 days with you.
Sounds good.
Okay. Unless the war ends sooner.
Well, it might be a victory flag by then.
Is that okay with you guys? We'll try it out, see what...
Very good, thank you for that, Sarah.
Thanks, Sarah, thanks for following up on that, appreciate that.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, council, staff's recommending that council go into executive session.
We haven't called our special meeting to order, should we do that?
Oh, yeah, we're not in a special meeting.
You're not?
Yeah, you're correct.
Okay, so for grassroots and for WebEx viewers that were on our first meeting, we are adjourning our work session at this time, and we do have scheduled a special meeting to go into executive session for two topics that City Attorney Jim Tru will specify in just a moment. So that being said, I'm gonna go ahead and get out of this meeting, and I don't need to get back in right...
Is the same WebEx invite for both?
It is?
Yes, last night was an anomaly where we had an issue, but you can do everything from this WebEx.
Oh, okay, oh, great. Then I'll just jump back on for a moment. All right, this is a call to order for the Aspen City Council's special meeting of March 15, 2022, could we have a roll call, a vote for roll call attendance?
I'll do that. Counselor Mazero.
Oh, present.
Counselor Doyle.
Here.
Counselor Howenstein.
Present.
Counselor Richards is here, the record reflect that, but Mayor Tori.
And I'm here as well.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and council, staff is recommending in this special meeting that council go into executive session pursuant to CRS Section 2464024B, conference with an attorney for the local public body for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions, for E, determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiation, and instructing negotiators, and for F, personnel. The specific items of discussion in the executive session involve the following. First, Aspen Board of Realtors, Inc. versus City of Aspen, Picken County Case Number 2021, CV 030131, and the second item is city manager review and contract negotiations. If council votes to go into executive session, the executive session will be recorded and the recording will be maintained by the clerk for a period of not less than 90 days.
And will we go into executive session for the reasons stated by our city attorney?
I'll second.
A motion and second for executive session, is there any further discussion? I guess further discussion will be at the conclusion of executive session, we will come out of executive session and adjourn our special meeting, but we will not be signing on to WebEx or grassroots at that time.
Or having any further discussion, that is my understanding. No further discussion, certainly no decisions, and we will not need to sign on to WebEx or re-adjourn here.
All right, we have a motion and second, could we have a roll call vote for going into executive session, please?
Counselor Richards.
Yes.
Counselor Howenstein.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
Yes.
Counselor Mazero.
See.
Mayor Tori.
Yes.
Again, we will not reconvene up here, we will adjourn to the council's, the city council's chambers.
Electric pass.
The city council's meeting room known as Electric Path.
Thanks. Thank you very much, grassroots.
Aye.
Have a great evening.